Support for your public radio station comes from our members and from United Way of Greater Rochester and the Finger Lakes, serving the community for more than 100 years. Dedicated to creating a future where everyone's basic needs are met so all can thrive. More at unitedwayrocflx.org.
From WXXI News, this is Connections. I'm Evan Dawson. Our connection this hour was made on June 17th when Rochester City Council passed the new city budget. Here's how my colleague Gino Finelli reported it. Quote, "A leaner and modest city budget passed City Council, a spending plan thus far avoids significant cuts despite declining and uncertain federal revenue. The budget comes amid the expiration of federal COVID relief dollars and the threat of withholding of funds by the federal government to sanctuary cities. The city is currently being sued by the Trump administration over its sanctuary policy, and while the move to withhold funds was blocked by a court ruling in April, the administration has continued to threaten similar tactics. The bill passed City Council by a vote of six to three. Council members Stanley Martin, Kim Smith, and Mary Lupien voted no." End quote. Next week, we're going to welcome Mayor Malik Evans and several members of council to talk about their support for this budget on the program. Today, we welcome one of the dissenting voices on council. Rochester Council member Mary Lupien is back with us here, and it's nice to see you. Thank you for being here.
Nice to be here, too.
First time having you on the program after the primary. And listeners know that Mary Lupien was a candidate for, on the Democratic primary line, for Rochester mayor and was not victorious. Malik Evans, the incumbent, won the primary and will be the Democrat on the ballot in November. But for you, I guess I'll just start by asking, how are you feeling post-primary? I mean, what's life been like for you on the other side of this campaign?
I'm a lot less busy. No, I feel really good. And I knew that regardless of the outcome, good things would happen. And that gave me a lot of freedom to run the race that I wanted to run because all outcomes were good. You know, I knew that if I was not successful, I still have two years left on council, and everything that we've built will help me do a better job on council because the mayor has marginalized, the mayor and the majority of city council have marginalized the three progressive members and Willie. And it's incredibly difficult to get anything through without engaging the community and the community showing up for honestly years to get things passed. And so now, so many more people have awareness of the types of things that we could be doing at the city level and we're not. And much more people are aware of who I am and, you know, what we're trying to do on council.
Did you go into election night with any expectation of how it was going to go?
Had no idea.
You really didn't know?
No. I mean, early on, maybe a month or two before the primary, we had heard the results of the mayor's poll that he did that showed the three candidates tied, which was very interesting to me because I didn't think that Shashi was doing, had any much, had any chance because his, you know, so many of his ideas weren't thought all the way through, and he has no, had no idea about Rochester. He just kind of dropped in. But he was getting some support from part of the city that was more, I think, disengaged. And I heard a lot in the community, like a lot, that people were angry at Malik, that they didn't think he was doing anything, that they felt abandoned, that he wasn't connected with the struggles that they were feeling. And I think they just didn't come out. But I did not know how it was going to turn out. I knew, you know, my numbers were showing that I was doing well, but we didn't have the resources to hit as many doors as we needed to.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, here's what I think you're saying. We could look at just the numbers of who did vote.
Right.
And of who did vote, the mayor got 57% in a three-way race.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, that was a resounding victory for the mayor. You're indicating that you think that is not representative of how people in the city feel?
Definitely not.
But there was 10 days of early voting. There was primary, there was all-
Well, you know that it was a historically low turnout.
It was a low turnout.
And I think that we're going to be unraveling this, trying to figure out what happened. I'm very interested in the people that didn't come out, you know, what kept them home? Was it feeling disenfranchised, that their vote didn't matter? You know, and I know it was very hot on Election Day, but the 10 days of early voting showed it was consistent, all along with how little turnout there was going to be compared to, you know, the previous contested mayor, the previous few elections.
Okay. And so I am curious to know now, when you say, no matter what was going to happen, whether you won or lost.
Right.
That good things are going to come out of this, that there's, so tell me a little bit more about that. I mean, so you're not looking at this and saying, hey, I was in a three-way race, I got a third of the vote, I didn't win, it wasn't enough traction. You're looking at some positives.
Oh, absolutely. There were so many variables in this election, and it's obviously very hard to challenge an incumbent who doesn't have a scandal, doesn't have something that you can get him on other than he's not doing enough. And a lot of people just were like, what? You know, there's no scandal, isn't he doing a good job? But it wasn't the people who are feeling the pain of us not doing anything. Those were the people that were telling me, like, anybody but this guy. You know, just me walking down the street, people would shout that at me, like, go ahead, like, this, we got to get this guy out of here. And I think there's a real disconnect from parts of the community that are really struggling. And the positives that I see, you know, being that it was, it's very hard to challenge an incumbent, and we had way less resources, you know, than my two opponents, in terms of people and money. Stanley Martin got the most votes out of every candidate on council. That tells me that it's not the progressive policy that people, that this, this election was not a referendum on the progressive policy. She is arguably to the left of me, and she got the most votes. And that, that shows me that people are listening and people, it resonates.
But if you look at New York City, which I know on election night, you were looking at New York City.
I sure was.
And you were very happy about what happened in New York City. With Zoran Mamdani winning a primary handily in a race that not only had a lot of candidates, but a massive political name in Andrew Cuomo.
Yeah.
Who, according to the best guesses in polling, all the way up to Election Day, you know, people weren't going to be betting against Cuomo. So Mamdani wins. And I told Mary before the program, I got an email this morning when we had teased the program, Tony wrote in to say, "New York City defeated Andrew Cuomo. We had the chance to do the same, and we chose not to." Is that how you see it in Rochester?
Again, I don't, it's not that black and white. I think there's a lot going on here that wasn't present in New York City. You know, we don't have ranked choice voting, we don't have public funding for elections. I think we did have a choice as a community to create solutions that center people, that fund and invest in people. And the 13,000 that showed up to vote, yes, you know, seven, 800 of them chose to keep things the same. That, we live in a 200,000-plus city. You know, I'm, again, very interested to understand why people didn't come out and vote. Where in New York City, Mamdani brought thousands of people into the electoral process. So they had the reverse. You know, they had a higher turnout because of the excitement that, you know, people had for Mamdani for a change. And I think, you know, I said this before the show, you know, Andrew Cuomo is not Malik Evans, not even close. Andrew Cuomo is a evil human being. And, you know, all of the things on his record, from the deaths in the nursing homes to the women that he sexually harassed and is dragging through the legal process, it's a very different dynamic. And, you know, I think ranked choice voting wouldn't have altered the outcome of this race. But I do think it's something that we should look at at local elections, especially for the council race.
You don't think Andrew Cuomo is a good man?
I do not.
Do you think the mayor of Rochester is a good man?
I wouldn't call him evil. I think that we have different priorities. You know, I value judgment on good or bad. I'm not going to make that call.
Well, and so, you know, I mean, it was Tony's email who brought this up, making the comparison. But at the same time, you know, Mamdani became a kind of sensation because of how he conducted his campaign, the traction that he got with people who had never heard of him until months before or weeks before. And I think some people will look at your campaign and say, why did, were you not able to do that? You know, why was he successful and you weren't? If your, if your ideas are similar for how to govern a city, why was he able to do it and you weren't?
Well, I think his resources were much greater than mine. You know, I raised about $110,000, which is less than half of what both of my opponents started at. You know, they have a system of public financing in New York City, and he was able to, he raised four million and was able to get eight million. Had I had more resources, I think that I could have done so much more. You know, and I was working with a lot of people that were new to the process. And it is hard to get people that have done this before because the consequences are so great for going against the political machine. And so I had a lot of support from people, you know, behind the scenes that couldn't officially, you know, be on my campaign. They couldn't donate more than $99. That, you know, had I been able to fully use my network and raise the kind of money that Mamdani did raise, I think we could have done more.
I think I just ask because I want to make sure I understand your perspective on, you view your campaign as you were up against resources, you were up against, probably in your view, a political establishment?
100%.
Okay. But have you entertained the idea that the reason you didn't win is that this is a popular mayor? That people do feel pretty good about where the direction the city is going, and that your ideas did not resonate enough?
No, absolutely not. When we got to the door, everyone, I would say, everyone that I talked to, you know, and some of my volunteers, you know, maybe not able to communicate as well as I do. But when I said, "We need to be investing in our people," that resonated. No one was like, "No, we should spend $27 million on the convention center. That's how we should spend our money." Zero people said that. And I, I really don't know. I can't tell you. You know, I had Mitch Gruber going around telling people he wouldn't trust me to run a lemonade stand. You know, so I had, I had people that we share voters, you know, that were working to not just promote the mayor, but, you know, spread misinformation about my campaign that guaranteed basic income isn't, and I know we've had this conversation, you know, it's just not possible. If it were, we would have done it already. It's this attitude of like the adult in the room, they know better, we can't possibly be spending our money on people. And they convince us that it's not, it's not feasible, it's not possible, when it absolutely is, and it's just a policy choice. So, you know, it could be people's, you know, lack of faith that it's, it's possible. But Mamdani, if he's allowed to become, if he's allowed to go forward and wins the general election, he will show that these policies are possible when we have the political will and the courage to change things how they've always been done. And I think that's why he's so dangerous. That's why India Walton was so dangerous, and that's why, you know, they were really afraid of my candidacy. Because when we show it's possible, that defense goes away. So, you know, for, for all of the cities in New York, what's our excuse?
Well, but let's talk about GBI, because when you say, you get, you seem annoyed that your political opponents were saying, "This is pie in the sky, it's not possible." So Stanley Martin, who got the most votes on Rochester City Council, said, you know, "We could, we could take $5 million for GBI, and we could find that money." $5 million, $500 a month, that's $6,000 per year. A $5 million allocation would serve 833 people. Four tenths of 1% of the population of Rochester. So if you go to 10 times that number, it's a $50 million allocation now that you got to come up with, and it still serves 4% of the city of Rochester, 8,330 people. You go to 100 times that, it is still serving less than half the population. And that's $500 million. Where is the money coming? Help me understand. I know you're laughing at this, but like, I do want to understand it.
Yeah, and we've had this conversation before.
I know, and I know you get kind of frustrated with me, but I'm just looking at numbers, I'm looking at math. So take me through the math.
I understand. Any, any allocation is better than what we're doing now. And take the two, little over 2 million that we did spend on our guaranteed basic income pilot, which has now ended. That served 300 families at $500 a month. $6,000 per family. We spent $2 million, $2 million of ARPA funding, almost the equivalent of what we spent on the GBI program, to fix up the four streets around Constellation Brands' new building. So think about what that says. So we, we have GBI, which is a program that we know works. We didn't wait for the report. You know, the report is still outstanding, but we know that-
Everybody agrees that it is a successful.
Absolutely.
Even, even the Democrats who won that are not in the block that you're in.
Sure.
Yeah. They agree that it's good.
Yep. So we know this program works for those 300 families. And we would give the same amount away in a corporate giveaway to Constellation Brands' whose owner has $3.4 billion. So that's the equivalent. So nobody is like, wow, where are we going to get the money to fix up four streets around Constellation Brands? It's just a shift in priority. We didn't have to do that. We could have had a $4 million GBI program. And there's money like that all around the budget. You know, we, just in the ARPA funds alone, the money we spent on capital projects that, you know, we had in the capital improvement plan for years out, and we're just, we just want to do them earlier, or, you know, expanding the convention center terrace for $6 million. We can find the money when we want to. And the way that we spend our money is predominantly on these big projects, these luxury, you know, apartments that we'll, we'll give a million dollars to here and there, to attract people here. And what I'm saying is if we invest that money in our people, it matters to the families that we invest in. And we're not going to get out of our poverty, we have over half of our kids in childhood, in extreme childhood poverty. We're not going to get out of that overnight. But whatever money we put towards guaranteed basic income makes a difference for those families to get out of poverty. And every, every, 300 families, how many kids does that affect? Right? It's not nothing. And I was looking at, you know, with, with like a holistic approach. I was saying, let's scale up our community responder programs. Because the study that, you know, I pushed for from the Law Enforcement Action Partnership that did a deep dive on 911 calls, found that only 18% need a police response. The other 82% could be answered by a community responder, which is infinitely less expensive. You know, the police have a $5 million vacancy allowance. Wait, is that true? I'm trying to remember the exact numbers. It might be 14. It's a, it's a huge number. We overspend that, no, $14 million is the overtime. And we overspend it every year. Whatever we budget for overtime, we, the police budget is infinite. Whatever they use, they get, we find it. But if we can rely less on police, we can actually take that vacancy allowance, which is, I think it's 5,700, $5,700,000, put that towards GBI. And the less we rely on police, which is more than a third of our budget, when you consider pension, when you consider benefits, which are not calculated in the 115 million that it shows their department gets in the budget. That's money right there. And again, that won't happen overnight, that's a scaled up approach. But then there's, you know, revenue generation, like public banking, which I've been fighting for, and, you know, looks like it's going to, two years ago, looked like it was going to pass, pass the House and the Senate in, in the state legislature. And it has support for Rochester Public Bank, which allows us to use our deposits, like the taxes that we pay, sit in Wall Street banks, and those Wall Street banks lend out our money and make interest on our money. And a public bank would just allow us to do it ourselves, which would spur development by allowing us to give out low-interest loans, and we make free money off of our money. So looking at other revenue generation, are there, you know, extra surcharges that we can put on things that have a low impact on people, but, you know, in aggregate generate a lot of money? But there's no will to do that.
I understand the idea of saying, looking at the police budget, it's a third of the city budget, either chunks of millions of dollars at the margins, but when you talk about-
It's not the margins.
Okay, okay, fine, okay. I understand that. But when you talk about the streets around Constellation Brands, or the Aqueduct, the big city projects downtown, a lot of that money is coming from New York State that is earmarked for economic development, that is not the kind of thing where a city can just say, "Well, we're going to actually spend that on GBI."
Yeah, that's what they'll want you to believe. The $2 million that I just mentioned was ARPA money. So yes.
So ARPA was more flexible, that money is, but there's no more ARPA money coming up.
Right. And how, no, there's not, but how we spent that money is indicative on how we spend our money all of the time and what we prioritize. That money should have been for people to recover from COVID, not capital projects that we could have done years out and didn't, or don't need to at all. But when we ask the state for money, we ask for that money. We could ask differently. And I get that there's different pots of money, but we're not even trying. So yes, once we get that money, it's earmarked for these, these capital projects that we've asked for. Or, you know, what we, what I quoted a lot was that the city asked for 75 million, no, $33 million to build 75 houses. We asked for that. We could ask for different. And I don't, you know, have, I understand that that's a harder ask of the governor because the governor is backed by the same real estate interests that our mayor is. And it's easier to give money that eventually ends up in those people's pockets. But let's use our advocacy, let's ask for this, because we know, we have a city with the five highest poorest ZIP codes in the, in the state. We have a unique problem here, and if we know that guaranteed basic income will help our people, let's use our advocacy to ask for that money from the state. We just got $25 million for, you know, anti-poverty money. It can happen.
We're going to talk violence prevention, public safety in a moment here. But just kind of tying up a couple of points here. So you've talked about Constellation Brands moving downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Do you view that as a win for Rochester?
Nominally, you know, I, proved to me that they're-
A Fortune 500 company moving downtown at a time when so much is left, it's a nominal win?
Proved to me that their employees are patronizing businesses downtown. Are we seeing more businesses pop up because of their workers? I, you know, I think they, like other businesses, you know, they have a lot of remote workforce now. And so, okay, they, I'm sure they pay taxes, but it's not, what has it done for the city? How can we put a value on them moving downtown? You know, we gave them $2 million. We're talking about this $200 million Aqueduct project that we're funding. The way I look at it, what's the return on investment? If we're putting out all this public money, and it was specifically a sweetheart deal, the Aqueduct project was a sweetheart deal to get Constellation Brands to come downtown because it's building them a park in front of their building, proved to me that that's a net benefit to Rochester.
Yeah, I guess I understand the point. I think it's, this is a city that has lost its big three, its big anchors, and-
And that's not how we go forward as a city. I don't think we're, we're going to get another Kodak or a Xerox.
I don't think people think Constellation's another Kodak.
No.
But, but attracting Fortune 500 companies to come back to your actual physical downtown?
When we have a trained workforce, like businesses go where there are employees to hire, and there are even businesses here in Rochester and in the outskirts of Rochester that are desperate for employees, but there's not any with the skills that they need. So again, when we invest in people, we, we give them what they need. And, you know, I don't think corporate giveaways creates loyalty. You know, the second Constellation Brands can get out of here, I don't doubt that they will.
If they find a better deal elsewhere?
Yeah.
So then, when it comes to GBI then, I, I know that there's not a hard and fast, we're going to fund it, and this is many households, we're going to do.
I know that you want that.
I, I do, just because I want to know what the vision is. Like, is the vision for, for 5,000 households? Is it for 10,000 households? Is it, you know, if you do 500? I, I don't know what your vision is. And I know you kind of seem annoyed with me, but-
Well, we need to do-
I don't know what the vision is.
I very much rely on data. And I don't have the, I don't have the resources to do the kinds of, you know, evaluations that we need to really understand. What is our need? You know, how long should the program be? What's, what amount of money should be given out? You know, what requirements should there be, if any? And there's so many different, there's hundreds of pilots across the country that all operate slightly differently. And I really want to understand, you know, what are the best ones in, in each? You know, what, what will work in Rochester? Where do we start? And I think that targeting different populations is the way to go, you know, whether it's families of the city school district, or youth aging out of foster care, or seniors that are raising their grandkids, or survivors of domestic violence, right? The populations where extra cash to help them move themselves out of poverty in the way that only they know how makes a bigger impact. It's intersectional, right? When you're helping seniors, we all know seniors are struggling if they're on fixed incomes, and God knows, you know, if some of these programs are going away at the federal level, and they're the ones raising their grandkids. And, you know, these are the same kids that are, you know, potentially stealing cars or, you know, getting into trouble. And if we do not invest in our youth, whatever problems we have now are going to multiply because the youth are not getting what they need. And any, anyone who understands anything about human psychology, like when humans don't have their needs met, they try to meet them in whatever way they can. And that's what these kids are doing. And we also know that when we meet their needs, they choose more positive paths. And that need could be stable housing, that need could be a positive adult in their life, you know, that need could be an after-school program. But whatever it is, those interventions cost much less than police enforcement.
And so, on council now, and really with this administration going forward, as I said, GBI is getting a lot of love from this mayor and from members of council. The difference is, where does the funding come from?
But you say he gets a lot of love. He cut the program.
He's saying, "This is something that should be happening, and it should be funded at the federal level."
Not, universal basic income should be funded at the federal level. Guaranteed income is funded, all of these pilots that I speak of are at the local level. And this is something, you know, it's just passing the buck. Like, yes, it works, but we're not going to prioritize it. And there is going to be a guaranteed income program for pregnant mothers coming from the county through the anti-poverty money. But again, one shot, right? We're not talking about sustaining this program that we know works.
When you talk about, maybe it's R C S D families, or seniors, or survivors of domestic violence, that, that also sounds like another pilot, though. It doesn't sound like a well-defined idea that, you know, has a set of goals.
Targeting those populations is a goal.
Okay, no, no, I, I'm-
These are populations that need extra support. And as a way of, pilot means that we're, we're testing it out.
Right.
Right? We're not testing out guaranteed income.
And you don't view it like that.
We know that it works. We know that it will benefit these families. But knowing that we can't have the full-scale program on day one, this is a way to start, right? To impact populations that have an intersectional impact, you know, that you're helping seniors and kids, or these youth that are aging out of foster care, we know what happens when they don't have the support. So we are impacting public safety by helping this population. There's no, there's no doubt in anyone's mind that it won't help them. It will help them.
So your concern is that your colleagues in city government might say that they support it?
Yes.
But their actions don't match that?
No.
Is there any momentum to get a local GBI with the current construction of council and the administration?
No.
Is that one of the reasons you voted against this budget?
I have voted against every budget that has ever been put in front of me. And it's for the same reasons, because we continue to fund enforcement and capital projects, and we are not funding the things that help, that directly help people. and we are not funding the things that help, that directly help people. You know, they'll say the convention center, well, you know, that brings X amount of dollars into the city and, you know, that helps the businesses and then the businesses will create jobs and the jobs- It's trickle-down. And it hasn't had that trickle-down impact. And the convention center, the convention center traffic peaked in the 90s and it's not going back. It's just to try to compete with other big cities for these larger conferences. We could be focusing on a niche market, like, you know, the city with union hotels or black-owned business district, you know, some other reason that people would choose Rochester other than the size of our convention center. That's what they think is going to solve Rochester's problems. And my campaign was about that being fundamentally wrong and investing in people is how we need to move forward. So these budgets that I voted no on have not done that. And someone needs to object. We could be proposing our own budget, like the state legislature does. In addition, you know, and the House, the Senate, the governor, all propose their budgets and then they try to work it out. We don't do that. We don't use the powers that we have to put forth our own vision. You know, we have priorities that we answer in a survey before the budget and, you know, that's- They don't listen to public input, they don't listen to our input. You know, maybe people will get some pet projects in to secure their vote, but we are not fundamentally changing anything about how we're doing, how we're spending our city money in Rochester. And the 21, 22 budget, both the mayor and Mitch Gruber, the mayor was a finance chair, both of them voted no on the budget. And they said it doesn't go far enough or fast enough. That was disingenuous. It was because the mayor was running against Lovely Warren in the primary that month. Had nothing to do with the budget because arguably her budget had more visionary programs in it than the mayor's did this time around or, you know, his last budget. And so many of the programs that he claims credit for were actually from that budget. You know, the financial empowerment centers came out of the Office of Community Wealth Building. He says, you know, he was the first person of the mayor's Office of Violence Prevention, but that's only because he took the Office of Violence Prevention and put it in the mayor's office. It started out under Lovely Warren in the Reckon Human Services Department. So so much of what she did, I think, was visionary. You know, obviously she had her issues and I didn't, you know, I didn't support the budget then, but the budget that he voted no on that said didn't go far enough or fast enough was better than the budget that he's put forward.
I was struck during the debate when the candidates were asked, I think by Cheryl McKeever, about what the future downtown should look like. And Shashi Sinha said, you know, we need more business districts, we need more vibrancy, we need more safety. The mayor talked about, I mean, and I'm going to sum up here, but the mayor talked about the ongoing projects that you have been kind of assailing here. So the Aqueduct and bringing Constellation downtown and bringing more vibrancy, a strong revived set of anchors downtown. And he said that people should be proud of the downtown. People should, Rochester deserves to have a great downtown.
They do.
And your answer was very different. I mean, you said essentially that what you heard was someone talking about spending money on buildings, not people. And that you talked about the needs of the people who are struggling from addiction, people who are hurting.
Right.
You talked about drug overdose centers to help people, a very different vision of downtown.
Why isn't downtown more vibrant, right? There, it's because our deep issues are showing. And with the Business Improvement District and the quote-unquote Ambassador Program that was supposed to show tourists to where the restaurants were, but it was really to get our problems off the street. And I don't think that's the way that we deal with it. I think it's backwards to focus on building up downtown because that is only successful if we sweep our problems under the rug because people don't feel safe. They don't feel safe, not even because it isn't safe. Because I think that's also widely recognized that in terms of crime numbers, downtown is one of the safest places to be. But there's people that are unhoused. There are people that have addiction. There are people that are housed, but just don't look like the people that we're trying to attract downtown. And I want a downtown that where everyone is welcome and that we don't have to hide our problems because we've addressed them. So I don't think we get that thriving downtown by ignoring the problems that we have in our city because they're coming out. You can't hide them. And I don't think we should have downtown be so policed that nobody feels welcome there. And so, it's, I think about it like, this is going to sound silly, but I think about it like a woman trying to attract a man, right? So you can put on all the lipstick and you can doll yourself up, but if you don't deal with your internal issues, people can sense it. It's desperate. You actually push away the people that you want to attract to you. But when you focus on who's here now, our people, and invest in our people knowing that they're all, they're enough, we just need to support them, right? Then people are naturally attracted to the city because it's a great place to live. And we're a place, we're a city that values its people and takes care of our people. And we won't have a problem attracting people. So I want to do it backwards. And I don't think it'll take 20 years to deal with the problems that we have. You know, there are solutions out there that, that's what gives me hope. There are cities out there that have, they're already addressing their issues. You know, we have Austin that bought two downtown hotels to turn into low-income and housing for the unhoused. You know, we have cities like New York City that have an overdose prevention center and that shows to reduce crime and, you know, people shooting up in doorways because you give them a medically-supervised place to go. So if you want people off the street, give them a place to go. You know, they're really common sense solutions focused around just humans, right? We know how humans behave. So instead of working against it, let's work with it. And I know that when we have those solutions, we will start to see an improvement right away.
We're talking to Mary Lupien, member of Rochester City Council. I am very late for the only break of this hour. When we come back here, we're going to talk a little bit more about how the council member sees the issues of public safety, violence prevention, and where resources are being allocated in this budget versus perhaps where she wants to see the resources allocated to deal with these problems. We'll take a little bit of feedback from you in the remaining minutes that we have with Mary Lupien next.
Support for your public radio station comes from our members and from Bob Johnson Auto Group, proud supporter of connections with Evan Dawson. Believing an informed public makes for a stronger community. BobJohnsonAutoGroup.com.
This is Connections. I'm Evan Dawson. Let me grab Robert, who is listening in Fairport, on the phone. Hey, Robert, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for taking my call. On an earlier show with Stanley Martin, she said that the GBI would be funded from $5 million taken from the police budget. She was very specific about that. And, you know, in the wind-up to the question to Ms. Lupien here, it was kind of vague, but she was specific on the show. I'm kind of curious to see what Mary Lupien would have to say about that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I addressed that. You know, and Stanley Martin and I didn't talk about that. So that was just, you know, their assessment of what a GBI program could look like. And certainly that would be a great way to start because that is about the same amount of money as their vacancy allowance. But what I, and you may not have heard it, but what I said was that I'm really focused on evaluation and research and finding out what the best GBI program for Rochester would be. And then, you know, what populations made sense to start it. But my goal is that everyone who needed that would be able to get it and researching other ways to even increase our city revenue.
Robert, thank you. David on YouTube says, "I walk the South Wedge daily. Where do we get the money to keep playgrounds clean, keep the sidewalks cleared of overgrowth, the streets plowed and free of ice during the winter? I wish city leaders would focus on the fundamentals of running a city and then do the aspirational stuff."
Well, first I'd say taking care of our people is not aspirational. That is why we started a system of taxation and collective governance in the first place, right? Because we can do more when we work together. And I do agree, you know, I feel like potholes, street plowing, sidewalk plowing, playgrounds, things have never been in such a state of dish repair. And, you know, that money comes from capital improvement dollars. And in the next few years, a lot of that money has been slashed. You know, they cut big in things like sidewalk repair and playground maintenance. And, you know, we are dipping into our fund balance, which is kind of like our rainy day funds. And it does, you know, raise the point of how are we going to continue to do these projects? But in that same capital improvement, you know, plan, there was like $1,500 for, $1.5 million for downtown revitalization, which is really amorphous. I don't know what that means. But it is very important to make sure that our city services continue functioning. But again, it isn't all that much money in the grand scheme of things in this budget. You know, it's maybe, I wish I had the numbers in front of me, but I think the sidewalk repair program's like $2 million. Again, what we spent on the Constellation Brands project.
Roger on YouTube says, "I was overcharged by RG&E and now I'm in collections years later with no recourse. I was forced into making a payment plan and being charged for that until they looked at the meter and realized they were wrong. The underpayment amounts to their financing or program charges. This is now on my credit and affecting my ability to survive. How are you going to fix this for residents utilizing RG&E?" That's from Roger.
Yeah, Roger, I'm sorry you've had that experience. I myself am fighting with RG&E for like three months in a row of getting a $700 bill. I'm sorry, I didn't use that much electricity. And I have a line to, you know, the intergovernmental relations person who is supposed to be able to just like solve these issues. So anyone out there listening, if you have an issue with RG&E, send me an email because we can often get it resolved very quickly. But their first stance is like, no, you're wrong. But much of the time, they are wrong. And, you know, we don't have much recourse with RG&E except issuing a study to understand how we could buy out RG&E and have a public utility. And, you know, we've had whole shows on that and I encourage you to go out and research them. But basically, we would be able to bond to buy the infrastructure and then pay back that bond with the profits that we would make from the ratepayers. And RG&E makes over $100 million a year in profits from Rochester.
But can you make sure the audience understands where in the process we are in terms of any possible public utility?
Right. So there've been, you know, motions to make it seem like the mayor and the majority of city councils support this study, but, you know, they said, well, the county won't do it and we should, it shouldn't really be on the back of our taxpayers.
They say we shouldn't be the only ones funding the study.
Yeah, which is a great way to say we're not actually going to do this because the real reason we're not doing the study is because Bob Duffy is on the board of Avon Grid, RG&E's parent company, and gets $250,000 a year to be on the board. And Joe Morelli's son is their lobbyist. So they're not going to do this study. We need to elect people that are interested in the study or that the public pressure outweighs the pressure that they would get for doing it. But it's $500,000 to do a phase one study to understand if and how we could take over RG&E. And that's what we need to be able to put it, ultimately needs to go on the ballot for the public to vote on, but they need the information to be able to know if they should, how they should vote.
So right now, it's stymied.
It is stymied.
Okay.
And that is, very few people came out to speak on this year's budget, but the people who did come out almost predominantly were asking us to pass the study.
Interesting. So on public safety, tell me a little bit more about how you see, I'm kind of pulling back my notes here. So this budget includes, boy, there's, oh, Mary. You know, council member, I had this thing that I was going to ask you about. So this is really good hosting. It's good radio?
We cut funding for violence prevention. You know, we increased funding for policing.
I'm going to find, go ahead, go ahead.
We are adding an action team to further diversify.
Here it is. $332,000 for the action team housed in the Office of Violence Prevention, a part of the mayor's office. The team offers a police alternative response to non-emergency calls for service.
Yes.
Is that a positive thing?
Yes, and that idea came from me. Not that the mayor would acknowledge that, but, you know, you can see that in prior council meetings where he did before election time. It is a positive step forward. But there are more, this is just for phase one. You know, there are more phases to this. It is not the, it should not be in the mayor's office. This should be in the same department as the person in crisis team.
But why does that matter? I mean, like effectively, it's going to do the same thing, isn't it?
Exactly. So you have to duplicate all of the infrastructure.
But when council member Stanley Martin says, she laments that the bill, this budget, does little to allocate funds to public safety alternatives to police. Do you agree with that?
It's, how much did you say? $332,000? To $115 million plus benefits plus pension? Yes. It's a drop in the bucket.
So you're saying it's not enough?
No, we need to scale it up. In that same study from the Law Enforcement Action Partnership where those recommendations for this team came from, 18% of 911 calls need a police response. We are sending police to all kinds of things that they do not want to be at, they do not need to be at, and we are wasting their time. And so when we do need help, they're not available. Right now, I got into, I got into a car accident this Sunday before election because somebody tried to pass me in oncoming traffic and I turned into their car. We waited three hours for the police to come. They never came. Now I'm fighting with my insurance company because I don't have a police report. Why are we sending police to just take the report, right? They're not more skilled at writing down what each of us said, right? But this is, we, and they weren't coming because they had other important things to do. But there's more things that we are sending police to than they have time to come and attend because, you know, we are down 120 patrol officers. We're in a retention and recruitment crisis. We can't just go out and hire more cops. We have eight in the academy. And beyond the fact that we need to hire more from the city, more officers of color that understand our population, right? We just don't have the ones to go to these calls. So we need to scale up our community responder programs to meet the 82% of calls that could be answered by them.
In our remaining minutes here, I know we've talked about GBI, which in itself is a way to potentially address some housing, but let me be specific on housing. Bonnie called to ask, "What about taking older housing into co-ops in general?" Okay, so yes to that, you say? So I wanted you to take some time to be specific about what you think could be done regarding housing and what is being done.
I think that there needs to be a variety of housing options and cooperatives is one really important way that we could help people do more together. And, you know, I come from an intentional community background where I've lived in a couple of cooperatives. And even sharing, pooling our money to buy food together, to buy it in bulk, there's so much efficiency that we could be doing. You know, Dana Miller, who's the Commissioner of Neighborhood and Business Development, one of his ideas that he champions is a momun. So having single moms come together in a living situation where they have shared, you know, shared kitchen, where they could easily, you know, share childcare. These ideas-
Not a commune, a momun.
A momun, yeah, which I love. But we haven't done it. You know, it's just kind of one of those ideas out there, you know, maybe someday. But accessory dwelling units, which are, you know, smaller granny flats, you might have heard them called, and backyards, converting garages, you know, tiny homes.
Are those allowed or not, ADUs?
They are sort of allowed in this next zoning code. They are allowed everywhere as a right if they are attached.
And the zoning code's coming out when?
Great question. We don't know. The zoning department has been done with it for like a year. It's just, people will ask the zoning department when it's going to come to council and he's like, I don't know, ask council. And we're like, I don't know. You tell us. I think it's, some of the things maybe were politically unpopular and so definitely wasn't going to come out before this election and maybe the fall.
Okay, but in our last 90 seconds then, so you've talked about some of what you'd like to see with housing. Realistically, what is going to happen with housing right now?
Not very much is going to change at all. You know, the mayor did put out an RFP for modular housing after both Shashi and I were talking about this, but it was for nine units. And it was for people who make $66,000 to $91,000 a year. So that's the mayor's idea of innovation. Nothing will change unless people turn out and demand that change.
Last minute here, do you think that this campaign that just wrapped up last month, does that damage your ability to work with people, to work with this mayor?
My ability to work with the mayor was zero before the campaign. He won't even pick up my call, he won't even look me in the eyes. This campaign gives me more political power because I had people that, it resonated with them, and you could tell by the way that he adopted my ideas and he adopted my language. He knows it resonated. And that gives me much more ability to have my ideas out there in the public and work with my colleagues, you know, that are aligning with these ideas to get the public, which is ultimately our only power as the minority on council.
When you look at New York City, and music's gonna play here, you're very optimistic about what a possible Mayor Mom Donnie would do.
Absolutely.
If publicly owned grocery stores, if things like that, if they don't work, will you change your mind on some of that stuff?
I'm always open to being wrong. I do think that they're going to work.
People watching on YouTube, Mary's got a big smile talking about Mom Donnie.
I do. But I think it's important for leaders to accept that their ideas may not be the best one, and be open to new, to new information.
When government passes budgets at different levels, we invite people in government to come on this program and talk about it. And we're grateful when they're willing to do that. We're grateful for the time that you give. Mary Lupien, a member of Rochester City Council, thank you for making time.
I appreciate it.
Nice talking to you. Thank you, listeners, for being with us, viewers on YouTube, and from the whole team. We're back with you. We've got some special programming tomorrow on Independence Day, and we'll see you next week on member-supported public media.
This program is a production of WXXI Public Radio. The views expressed do not necessarily represent those of this station, its staff, management, or underwriters. The broadcast is meant for the private use of our audience. Any rebroadcast or use in another medium without expressed written consent of WXXI is strictly prohibited. Connections with Evan Dawson is available as a podcast. Just click on the Connections link at WXXINews.org.